1920, when women got the right to vote, we're kind of an outgrowth of the suffrage movement. We felt that not only did people need to vote, but they needed to be informed voters. And for 105 years now, we've been trying to get voters out and registered and informed. And this is one of the ways we do it at candidates' forums. We also register voters at a variety of places. If you were at the Pinkster Fest in Albany last week, you probably saw people. We go into high schools. We are at naturalization ceremonies. We are really everywhere where there are citizens, trying to make sure that everyone registers and votes. And now, when you're registered, we want you to show up and express your opinion and vote. Voting is next Tuesday at the high school, right where we are here. And you have to just be 18, a citizen, and a resident of Bethlehem for 30 days. So if you show up with your ID and your phone bill or your National Grid bill or whatever, you can vote. So now you want to know who you're going to vote for. And we have three candidates here. They have been, we pulled numbers. And in order of answering and introducing themselves, Susan will go first, then John, and then Bob. We're a small town. We go by first names. I hope you don't mind that we don't call you by that. So Susan, you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running?
Sure.
Let me tell one more thing, though. We do have two timekeepers. Everyone has two minutes to do their thing, whether it's answering a question or introducing or closing. And the timekeepers will warn them when they're one minute into it and then a minute and a half into it, and then a big red sign comes up and they have to stop. Okay, so Susan, you have two minutes.
So I'm Susie Barber. I have been thinking about running for board for quite some time, probably a handful of years. And then once, now I have a kindergartner, almost first grader, and almost kindergartner, and then an infant. And it seemed to be a good time to put my name out there and give it a shot. So I am a teacher. I work in Niskuna. I've been a teacher for 15-plus years. And I think that that is just a good piece to bring to the board, especially for conversation, to my passion for education and learning. I love being a part of a team. Ever since joining the board at my school, I, for our union, I feel like I've learned a lot more. And that is my best way of learning. I am a hands-on learner. And to get to know kind of what goes on within the district a little bit more, I've been watching a lot of the meetings. And I just think being part of the discussion and bringing my background in education is going to be a good voice to bring to the conversation.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, John, you're number two for this?
Yes. Good evening. My name is John Walston. Thank you for such a big crowd for being here. I've been a resident in the district for 23 years. My wife, Megga, and I are blessed with three kids, two that have graduated from the high school and one that's in 10th grade. Been a big part of the community ever since we've been here, volunteered and been a part of a lot of community programs, been a big part of the schools, volunteering different things, longtime coach for a long list of sports, a long list of kids. I have a small not-for-profit that focuses on physical movement and mental wellness. I have a business that's been in town for 22 years. And my wife is also an occupational therapist at Glenmont. So we're very ingrained in the community. Obviously, I've been on the board for three years. Interested in running again. I think I've done a decent job contributing to the board. I also feel like there's a huge, there's a huge learning curve, so I almost kind of feel obligated to continue going because I feel like the first year and a half, two years, is just a ton of learning and adjusting and adapting to what goes on. I think also understanding what it is to be an effective board member, as well as what the board really does. I think there's a lot of misconceptions coming into it, what the board's role is. So I would appreciate the opportunity for three more years to try to be as effective as I can, given what I've learned the last three years.
Great, thanks, John. Bob?
Thank you. My name is Bob Teigen, and I am a Bethlehem resident for about 22 years now. Three kids, all of them have graduated from Bethlehem, so we are, as of this year, empty nesters. My background, I have an undergraduate in education and a master's in English. I taught high school English for about seven years. Currently, I'm an attorney. I work for SUNY in higher education. So I think that the combination of my teaching background and now my higher education job and responsibilities now sort of bring a unique mix to the role. Like John, I am a returning board member, running again for my second term. You know, there was a couple of things when I ran the first time that I wanted to focus on, and to be perfectly honest, it hasn't changed that much. I want to, you know, Bethlehem has a fantastic reputation for a reason. We have excellent teachers, and we have great kids. And I didn't think when I was coming in that I was trying to make any waves or make any enormous changes. I think that my experience on the board is that the district is run very well, and I want to make sure it continues to run well. You know, I think that, like John, I believe that the experience that I've had has been a big learning curve. And again, like John, I think that my efficiency and my effectiveness at this point is much more than it was then. So I'd sort of felt somewhat duty-bound to run again. I feel as though I still owe, even though my kids are out, I owe a debt to the community that I want to serve. And I want to make sure that some of the mistakes I thought that were made during the last couple of years, for example, some of the collaboration and communication with the community, I think we can improve on. I saw it happen, and I'd like to, you know, the opportunity to make that happen the second time. Thank you.
Great. Okay, now, I have a number of questions here that were submitted through the school website. And I think I have enough questions that will last us through the hour or so, more than an hour that we have left. So, and we're going to sort of change the order each time whoever answered second the first time is going to be the first person. So this time, John, you'll be the first person to answer the question. And first question is, what steps would you take to improve school safety?
Thank you. Great, great question. I think, having been on the Facilities Committee the last three years and the bond and the efforts we're doing, I think the school's already on a wonderful path to that. We have a great relationship with the police department and the SROs. We've hardened the majority of the entrances at the schools. And we've also got the, a new door monitoring system that's part of some of the Capitol outlays each year, where we can monitor the doors for if they're being propped open and activity. We also use a system, I forget the name of it, but essentially it's a quick way to do a background check through someone's ID. So I think, I think we're doing a very effective job. I think we're very blessed to have a really great relationship with the SROs and the police department. You know, and again, I'm very excited that we're continuing to try to analyze and look at, look at spaces where we can, again, harden entrances. I think there's only two elementary schools that are slated for work in the future for that. And then continuing to be vigilant and try to create safe educational spaces for our kids is really important.
Great, okay. Bob?
Yeah, so again, it's going to sound very similar to John. I think there's a couple of different aspects of school safety. The one, obviously, is the infrastructure. And I will represent to you that the school is continuing and continually addressing that, you know, each year. It's always a factor. It's always a consideration that the school wants to do, hardening entrances and exits and monitoring, things like that. That's one thing. I think another big thing is providing procedures so that the school, the students, and the parents know exactly what's going to go on. I mean, it's not a secret about some of the things that have gone on here in the last year and some of the scary situations that were faced by the school and by the students. Quite frankly, I think that the school and the teachers and the administration did a fantastic job. But each, each event like that, I mean, you would love not to have any events like that, but, you know, to the extent that they happen, they exist as learning opportunities for us. And we, you know, and I can tell you that the board did consider the things that occurred and tried to figure out ways to improve responses to that. And, you know, I do think that we have a, we have a great SRO program and a very strong relationship with the local police department. I think all of those things, along with education, and making sure our students are aware of the different, I guess, dangers that exist without, in the community are things that we do now and should continue to do going into the future.
Great, okay, thanks. And Susan?
Can you just repeat the wording of it?
Sure, yeah. What steps would you take to improve school safety?
Okay, thank you. I agree with both Bob and John that I feel as though the steps we've taken so far as a parent right now in the school community have been really good. I can speak about in the fall when we needed a lot of communication. I, as a teacher myself and a community member and parent, felt that the district continuously gave great amount of information that was necessary, not too much information to the community to startle folks even more, but keep in the know. So I think keep making sure that all the buildings are up to safety code is just the step, first step you could take. I know going into the buildings, you need to have your ID, the doors are locked, badges are needed. So as of that piece, I think we're in pretty good shape there. And then again, just communication with the police. I do know that Bethlehem has a SRO program, and not all districts have that. So I do feel very proud to say that, oh, well, our district does have that. And so I think just keeping up with communication with police, administration, and the board to ensure that we do have the best safety standards for our students and our buildings.
Great, okay. So this time, Bob, you'll be the first one to answer. And I'm sort of moving in a different direction. So anyway, kind of following the questions as they came in. What would, what would you do to support the educational experience for special ed students? And the questioner asked about graduation rates and support for parents along with that.
We have a great special education department here at Bethlehem. I think one of the things the board, and you know, I think this was mentioned, the board has a certain function. And the function generally with regard to the educational experience of the students is to support the teachers and the administration. Those are the folks who are on the ground, those are the folks who are in the classrooms, and those are the folks who generally are in the best position to make recommendations and to make requests about making sure that the experience of the students is, you know, is as positive as possible. So as a board member, I think my role is to make sure that the department, number one, has the resources and the funds that it needs to make sure that it continues in its, you know, its mission to help the students. Number two, to the extent that there are problems with regard to any obstacles that they face, then it would be the board's job to try to intervene and see if they can figure out a way around that obstacle. And number three is to just make sure that, to the extent that the community has ideas or suggestions, to be a conduit between the community and the teachers and the administrations for improving the students. Obviously, the parents are in the best position, a lot of times, to know what any problems are. I think that the open policy of the board to receive criticism sometimes and suggestions is, you know, very, very important in terms of its function. And to the extent that what we would do to support is exactly that, is provide support to the teachers and the administration to make sure that the students are experiencing the best possible scenarios.
Okay. Susan?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want it again?
No, I'm all set.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Thank you, yeah. I think the most important thing is meeting each student where they're at. Every student learns differently. Every student has different needs for learning. So we can't just give a blanket statement that all students in the special ed program are going to receive education A, B, or C. That's why they have their IEPs for their individualized plan. But, so I think meeting them where they're at and communication with the teachers first and foremost in that program, who are working with those students or the parents, is going to help to have the board better understand what each student's need is for that student to have an educational experience that the parents are looking for. I think that we are such a great school community, and we have the resources to provide students and teachers with, that that conversation is a benefit for those families to help give their child the experience that they're looking for, for that graduation rate that you were saying. But meeting the students where they're at is going to be one of the most important pieces, especially in a special ed program.
Cool, okay. John?
I think that feedback is really important, whether it's the kind that you want to hear or don't want to hear. And it seems like this year, I feel like a lot of the parents who are involved in the special ed program seem to be sharing more, more information and organizing better, which I think will make it better for us as a board to hear their cautions and concerns and then share that, how we can translate that into policy, as well as, you know, budget considerations. I think, you know, there's supposed to be a really, really great Facebook group talking about starting either a PTA or PTO. I think the leadership change with Doug coming in and is really, he seems, from what I hear from the teachers and from parents, that he's more interested in, he seems to be doing a much, much better job of listening and being open to feedback. So I think that that's, that's a huge piece that we, as a school district, have to be open to. Because I think, again, being on the board, I don't, I don't think we hear a lot, at least the last three years, in time on the board, we don't necessarily hear that much about special ed services and programs and issues. I hear a lot from parents in the community, and I hear a lot from staff. But I think as, hopefully, as it becomes a greater level of organization amongst the parents, that they can be advocates for their students, and then we can, we can get that feedback and then do our part to try to support and increase, whether it's increasing graduation rates or getting better services or whichever. And again, and I think also with some of Doug's leadership, hopefully move in a direction like what Susie was saying, where we're actually meeting the needs of the kids and not just fitting them into, you know, programs that we have that may not be the best suited for them.
Okay, thanks. This is a more general question. Susan, you'll go first this time. What do you see as the role of public schools today? And how would you respond if you saw a threat to this vision from the broader community or politically?
I think public schools are so important because they're an opportunity to give education to all. But that's a lot, can you, sorry.
You know, I don't, I don't know. This is how I'm reading the question as I came in.
No, no, it's fine. It was just a lot of, I was thinking as you were reading. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just, it's, you know, how would you respond if you saw a threat to this vision?
Okay, okay.
From the broader community?
I think that public schools are super important. They give an opportunity for education to all community members, if they choose. And I think having a threat to public education is something that we need to stand up against because our students need that educate, or our children need an education, or deserve, I should say, deserve an education to prepare them for the world that they're going to go into. I think that education helps them understand working as a team. It kind of helps build them as a person and gives them an understanding of self in a, hopefully, safe-feeling community within the walls of the school. So to me, especially being a public education teacher, it is a very important part of our community, of our, of our background, of our country, of everything, for me. I do think that we just need to ensure that it stays to be a strong part of what we are as an education place.
Okay, thanks, okay. John?
I think, to me, that, you know, the most basic role of the school is to create opportunities and situations where we can foster functionally productive young people, right? And I think that having, having a space where kids are open to opportunities, they're open to leadership, they're open to education, they're open to their social, emotional development, all those, all those pieces, I think is really what, what the schools are for. I honestly think that politics has no place in the schools in terms of any type of influence from either side. And I think that it's certainly frustrating to see both sides doing that. And I think that, I remember when, when we were in school, there was so much of, you were just presented with the information and you were able to make, to make your own choices, and it wasn't so polarized and toxic. And I feel bad for kids right now. I think there is a lot of, there's a lot of that toxic kind of garbage that they have to sift through. And I think we need to get back to, again, how can we create the most functionally productive young people? How can we make them uncomfortable that they're going to grow in a beneficial way versus make them uncomfortable and have them, you know, not really grow, be stunted, you know, be triggered by everything and stuff like that? So I think that, you know, school should be a time for discovery, but discovery of everything, where they get the information that they're yearning for, and they're exposed to different things, and then they can work to find their path. So, but again, I think the biggest thing is, again, creating those functionally productive young people that we can feel good that we're sending out into the world to go, to go contribute and move our society forward.
Thanks, okay. Bob?
I don't think you can overstate the, what I believe to be the importance of the role of public education in both this community, the state, and the country. Public education is a manifestation of our decision as a society that education is a right that is afforded to every kid within, in the country. And that's what the public education system is. It's a demonstration of our commitment to the children to make sure that they obtain at least some type of education in order to go out and lead fulfilling lives. You know, obviously, you know, I think that the system itself has propelled this country into, you know, the country it is today. I think it's built both the middle class and, you know, obviously, the folks have gone on to, to, to great heights. So I, in terms of the role, I think it, the role of the public education system is to create the next generation of citizens who are going to then take the baton on and continue this, this, this great race that we're in. With regard to threats, look, I think that the public education system is under threat right now. You know, obviously, I assume that the question might be referring to, the Supreme Court just heard a case about, you know, some things going on in terms of, you know, public money's going to religious charter schools. You know, I believe that the public education system should remain completely secular. I think, you know, folks have their rights to whatever decisions. But the, in terms of protecting against a threat, obviously, there's, there's boards of education associations that we're, you know, intimately involved in. And I think organization and making our voices heard with regard to the different issues that have come up, that's the only thing we can do. I think we have to make sure that we continue to fight for the public education system. And, you know, I would certainly do my part in whatever was possible. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, John, you're first on this one. This may be easy. Were there issues of, in the past, that impacted your decision to run for office?
I'm sorry.
What sort of, what made you decide to stick your neck out and run for the school board? And I put my hand out to everybody because they don't get paid anything, they have meetings, endless meetings, and there's always going to be people complaining about what they do. So why would you, why did you stick your neck out and put yourself in this position? And now you're coming back for more.
It's just so riveting and wonderful. It's a blessing. No, I, too, like Susie, I, at first, I thought about it for a few, a few years. I had some, some physical and mental health issues going on, so I wasn't quite in the right space for it. And then I finally ran, and when I ran, it was probably one of the more contentious ones we've had in a while, which had a lot of political influence and was super dysfunctional and all that stuff. So, but at the same time, I, again, and I think it's also this idea that you're going to come in and create all this change. And I think you realize that there are so many influences, you know, local, state, federal, different, different dynamics that go on. So again, it's really been, it's actually been a very interesting experience. I think, you know, Holly, our president, does a really awesome job at, you know, leading things and managing things. And so, get back to your question, why I ran. I ran because I really just, I wanted to serve. I mean, it sounds, it may, it may sound corny. I didn't have any, any agenda. I just felt like I wanted to really contribute to what we had going on in our schools. My kids were having a really great experience at the schools. It's a, you know, we certainly have our problems and issues, but I think overall, we're certainly blessed to be in this, in this, this district. And I just wanted to, to contribute. So I decided to jump in. The first, like I said, the first three years were so amazing and riveting that I just can't wait for three more. So I'm super, super excited.
Okay, how about you, Bob? What made you jump into this pond?
Sure. Like, like John, this is, this is a second run for me. Ultimately, the first run, again, was a strange time. It was just, we were just emerging from COVID. I have to say that the COVID experience, you know, certainly affected me in a lot of ways, despite all of its, obviously, downsides. I did feel, at least for a certain amount of time, sort of a communal aspect to it, where everybody was in the same boat. I started doing a lot more volunteering during that time. I had a job change where my, I was hoping, at least, it hasn't worked out that way, but I was hoping that my, I'd have a little bit more of a balance between free time. And I thought that at least prior to that, I was never sure that I could actually fulfill the commitment to it. As soon as I became in a place where I thought I could fulfill the commitment, I ran. I thought I could bring something to the board, given my, my background. In terms of the, you know, sort of running again, like I mentioned, I think that there's a learning curve. I feel as though I am better at it now than I was three years ago. My kids, you know, some people say, well, your kids are out, what do you, you know, what do you, what do you care now? But like I said, I really, really believe that the public education system is so, so important that, at this point, I think that I am more value-added now than I was then. And I think that I owe it still to the community and to the school. They did a great job on my kids, you know, to give at least one more, you know, one more, one more term to try to, to try to repay that debt. Thank you.
And Susan, this is your first thing. What forced, what inspired you to jump in this time?
Yeah, so kind of like John said, like, I don't, I don't necessarily have an agenda. I definitely, I have thought about it for a long time. It's just something that I've been interested in. Again, I like education. But I like to talk to people. I love to work with others. I love being a part of the community, or a community and our community. I've been a part of this community for 39 years, so I'm not really going anywhere. But my husband and I both graduated from Bethlehem and had great experiences. And there's even, I look at the experiences that kids have now, and there's even more experiences within the district for them. And so I just, you know, wanted to become part of that conversation and, you know, to just keep on being positive about what we're already doing, being a listener, but also providing with my, providing with my background, so bringing that to the conversation as well. Not necessarily bringing change, but more insight into the conversations that go on within the meetings.
Great, okay, thanks. All right. I just, I was at Voorheesville the other day registering tapes to vote, and we had to be there at 8:00 in the morning or some ungodly hour. And I remember reading that it's, they say, high school kids should sleep in and come in late. I think in Bethlehem, they probably come in early, too. So here's the question, some, probably from some high school student that wonders why they have to get in at 6:00 in the morning. Should the high school start time be changed? If you support time change, what would you do to implement it? And Bob, you get to go first on this one. And I suspect you might have discussed this in your, on your board at some point. It comes up all the time.
Starting off personal, I, you know, I know there's a lot of science behind this, you know, the circadian rhythms of the kids. this, you know, the circadian rhythms of kids and who learns better at, at earlier times. And I do agree that the, the, you know, the, the start time is something we should be looking at changing. I know that there was a move, a push to this pre-COVID. Obviously, the world fell apart for a few years and then sort of got pushed back onto the back burner. I will tell you that, you know, one of the learning experiences I've, I've had is that you, you had this idea that I, I definitely agree with. But once you get into, you know, how the sausage is made, it's, it's, it's a lot more complex and complicated. You know, there are union rules about, you know, this school or that school. There's the bus routes. There's, there's a lot of moving parts to make something, even when people agree that generally this is a good idea, to make that a reality is not just a snap of the fingers. So I will say that we have had discussions, we've continued to have discussions on the board about this. I continue to support the, the idea of changing the start times. I know we've, we've, we've made some progress, at least, in coming to some sort of resolution. But, you know, I'll be just completely frank, there's a lot of moving parts and it's not an easy thing to happen. You know, we don't just get to snap our fingers and there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, whatever, you know, sort of metaphor can use. But it, I will say that I support the, the, the idea of it. I think it's a good idea and we'll continue to work towards that goal.
Okay, Susan?
So I agree. It's a, definitely the research is there about the later start time for high school, especially getting that rest in. There is a lot of moving pieces, for sure. And things that look good on paper don't always work in the real world. I think one of the things that, and I'm not opposed to the idea of it. I, I do think that there are, I know of districts that have gone to later start times and it would be interesting to have a conversation with those districts on the attendance and if the attendance has changed. Because, again, things could look good on paper, but it doesn't necessarily mean that moving a start time is going to change attendance. And all the pieces, logistics with, like Bob said, the buses, sports, where would you, you know, these are things that come to mind when I'm thinking about later start times. Games being moved, are all districts in the area going to, and be on the same page with this later start time? So I guess, thinking, and you guys have probably had the conversation since you've been saying that you have been talking about it, do the pros outweigh the cons? So I, I think it is a great discussion to have and to continue to have. And, you know, see what works, but by talking with districts that have already done it and seeing if it really has been a benefit would be a great place to start as well.
John, what's your read on this?
I pretty much have the exact same thing to share as them. Yeah, I, I agree with you. The science behind it is there. As someone who doesn't sleep well at all, I get all the health benefits and 100%, but the ripple effect is just massive. I mean, we've looked at it several times and, you know, I, I think that, like, the best case scenario ended up being like 26 minutes was what, was what we could potentially try to, try to get. And I, you know, I, I guess my solution to that may not be super desirable, but maybe kids just take a break from their phones early, get the blue lights done, and they can go to bed early and they can get the extra 26 minutes of sleep. Just a thought. But I just think, you know, again, I think the ripple effect is just way too, way too massive at this point to really do anything that's really going to provide a mass, a massive benefit to our, to our kids.
Does anyone know, does anyone around here have the later start, any of the school districts?
My district changed to a later start time for high school.
Sure is. Okay. All right, this is, state budget just passed. It says, do you know how the proposed elim, and I forget, I'm not sure. So how the proposed elimination of the hold harmless practice that would affect Bethlehem? Did they, is it still in the budget? Does anyone know? Should I ask this question? Okay, I'll ask it and you should know. All right, you better know, somebody. And I should know. Would if, and would you be in favor of eliminating it even if that resulted in a reduction of aid to Bethlehem Central or the Bethlehem School District? Okay, the hold harmless business. I remember last year it was an issue and it was held in. And this year's budget, I presume it was an issue again. And so, let's see, the first one to answer this time is Susan. So do you know how this hold harmless would affect Bethlehem and how do you feel about it?
So to be quite honest, I'm not super familiar with the impact that this would have on the budget. So having not been in those conversations, so I don't really have a great answer with that. So I don't want to make anything up.
Okay, all right. All right, well, well, these two guys are on, maybe one of them, they've been through it, all right.
Yeah, they probably will have a great answer for you.
So John, you're next on this.
I have to be honest, like Susie as well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not educated enough on it to really speak intelligently. I'd have to really research some more on it and understand it better. My lawyer friend will probably have.
Okay, come on, Bob, what do you know?
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I, I did read a little bit about the hold harmless. Obviously, you're trying to shift liability from one party to another. We, we haven't discussed it on the board with regard to what, you know, whether it was included in the line. And we don't see it at this point. It hasn't been flagged as an issue with regard to affecting any of the, any of the budgeting or any of the, the impact to Bethlehem schools. So I'll say that it hasn't percolated up to such a degree that we were, we were concerned about it at all.
Okay, and for those of you who have to vote next week on the budget, there was a budget presentation and you can see it online at the same thing where you're watching this tonight to find out if, what the impact is on the budget, since that's where to find the answers, since none of us seem to know the answer. All right. So the person that asked the question, sorry. All right, so we will add another, ask another question that I hope you do have the answers to. Let's see. So we just went through Susan, John, and Bob, you were the last one there. So John, you're the first one on this one. Okay, and you talked about this before on safety and that you have SROs in your school. And I don't, this question says, do you support adding school resource officers, officers to every school building in the district? And how should data be used in making this decision and ones like it?
I think if money and resources were unlimited, of course, I would support it. I think that there's, there's a lot of moving parts on this one as well in terms of union contracts, our contract with the, with the police department, staffing, resources, budget considerations. I think the two SROs that we do have do a really amazing job. And they are, you know, present where, where they, where they, they need to be. But again, I think it also comes with the move of hardening the entrances and some of these monitoring systems that provides us great benefit that the kids are safe within the actual structure. You know, I think we live in a, in a community where response time is really, is really, is really great. But I think that there's a lot of factors that will make it difficult anytime in the short term to increase the number of, of, you know, SROs that we have at, at the other buildings beyond the two SROs that we, we currently contract with now.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, so I, I think that the SRO program is fantastic. I know that last time we got some, some sort of more basic questions about whether we agree with the SRO program to begin with, and I was, I was very, very in favor of it. I think our SROs do a great job. I think they help to form a very good bond between the, you know, the students and the, and the police officers, which is always a good thing to have. In terms of having an SRO in every bill, in every building, look, I, I get the, I get the question and I get the, the impetus for the question, which is, you know, our kids are, are in these buildings and we want them to be safe. We want them to be as safe as possible. Obviously, this, this question is related to the one earlier about the safety steps. And I think they're connected because, you know, the district and the board is very, very concerned about the safety of the students. And we do a lot of analysis to determine sort of where the resources should be spent and, and allocated in terms to get the best, I guess, the best efficient and most, you know, the best bang for the buck in terms of our resources. And, you know, at this point, I can say that it seems as though that the, the staffing level of the SROs, as it stands, is sufficient. Their response times are extremely low to the different schools. They do rotate around. Obviously, we have a, a good relationship with the police. You know, again, you know, in a perfect world, I suppose you'd have, you know, you'd have a, you know, a squadron of Navy SEALs at every, at every, at every building. But I think that what we have to do as a board is, is make sure that we're allocating our resources appropriately and making sure that the safety of the students is a top priority and we're making the decisions as best possible to make sure that that priority is met.
Okay, and Susan?
I, I agree with both that, I mean, of course, it would be great to have an SRO in every building. I feel like for many reasons it would. I think forming the relationship with the, the kids, I mean, I know all elementary school students would love to have a police officer in their building. They'd think it was great. But I, I think that you have to consider where is that funding coming from? Is it, you know, who's paying for that to, to be in our budget? So I, we're very lucky that our district even has an SRO program. And to have two officers within the buildings is amazing. So I think we need to start there by seeing what we do have. And again, if, if we could have it be all expenses paid for, then it would be a fantastic thing. I do think that we do a great job with safety from the outside perspective, looking in with, again, the communication with the, the need to get into a building, doors locked, and moving forward with that, to have plans that are in place as the buildings are being updated with safety measures. So in a ideal world, it would be great to have one in every building. I know that it would be welcomed. But I think when you're looking at a budget standpoint and a financial standpoint, you have to definitely just applaud that we are lucky enough to have them to start with.
All right, Bob, this time it's your first and the, let's see, focus moves to mental health. When a student shares concerns about their mental health, what steps should a school take to respond appropriately and supportively? And can you give a specific example of a mental health resource or program that you've supported for students? And goes on, the question goes on, what metrics or feedback have you used to assess the success of these initiatives?
Okay. So, you know, obviously, student mental health is a, is a very big concern for the, for the district. Again, I'll go, I'll, I'll fall back on, I suppose, the, the role of the board, okay? Sometimes I think people have a misunderstanding about what the board functions as. You know, the board is not coming up with the steps to address mental health problems, okay? The, the school has professionals, both teachers and counselors, whose job, who've been trained in that area, have, have been trained in mental health. You know, so, you know, no one would want to sort of take my word on how to address mental health concerns. So the school has lots of resources that it, that it accesses and it comes up with the policies and procedures that it has in response to the professional experience and advice of its, of its, of its employees and of outside resources. The, the role of the board is to, to number one, support those efforts and make sure that they're funded and to explore to the extent that there are other options that are brought to it, you know, either by the community or by, or by the teachers, to make sure that those efforts are supported. You know, so with regard to specific steps, again, I, I don't have any specific steps because that's not my role and that's not my expertise. You know, the, I think the first part was whether I have any concern. You know, obviously, I have concerns about the mental health of students. I do know that, you know, we have certainly been apprised at the board level of different circumstances. And I have been very impressed, for the most part, with the, with the abilities and the responsiveness of the, the school district personnel. And I think we have a great team. And, you know, our job as the board is to make sure that they have everything they, they need to do the best job that they can. Thank you.
Okay, Susan?
So I think that the social, emotional support of students is, and staff, is one of the top priorities in a building. It's known a student can't learn if they're not feeling safe or ready to learn based on mental health or a need like that. So again, I agree. I think as a board, there is the need to support the administration, to support the teachers within the buildings with the resources that they need, making sure that they have the programs or the plans in, that they need in place and how we can support that. I don't necessarily, we're not in the buildings enough to know the kids. Those are the frontline people that we need to be looking towards and listening to if they are feeling as though they don't have the support that they can give to their students to ensure that they are safe and ready to learn each day. So as, as a board member, I think just having that open line of communication with teachers and staff and faculty to make sure that they are feeling like they have everything they need to move forward in that development or in that role that they play each day as a big part of students' mental health.
Okay, and John?
Yeah, I, I'm going to probably reiterate most of what both Bob and Susie said. I mean, I think as a board, it's us supporting, you know, the resources that we have, whether it's, we were just talking about the SROs, utilizing them for, you know, welfare checks or having them be involved for, for home visits, where there may be some, some of your concerns. Some of the software we have that may be monitoring some of the language that, that the kids are using and they're messaging to see if any red flags come up. So I think as a board, it's really us embracing these, these options and supporting these options and resources. I think, you know, in terms of the metrics, I, I would imagine there's a lot of confidentiality issues that not that much can be, can be shared with us. So I don't, I don't think that's really our role to get too, too deep in, into the, into the weeds in that. I think obviously, again, as Susie said, you know, the social, emotional development of, of our kids, the mental health of our kids is, is paramount, just equally as much as their actual academic achievements. But I think as a board, we need to support the great staff and give them the resources that they need in order to be effective, to really help, help the young people who may be, you know, fighting whatever, whatever, you know, battle they're fighting within or whatever their, their circumstances are that are having a negative impact on their, their mental health, so.
Okay. All right, next question. And this, I don't know if it's anything here, but it's just some things that have happened other places in the country. What measures has or will the school district implement to ensure that sports coaches adhere to a code of conduct and that student athletes feel safe and supported in reporting any concerns about a coach's behavior or potential violations? And Susan, it's your turn to go first this time.
Excuse me, would you just repeat it just for more time?
Yeah. It's, what, what measures has or will the school district implement to ensure that sports coaches adhere to a code of conduct and that student athletes feel safe and supported in reporting any concerns about a coach's behavior or potential violations? Okay, so Susan?
Okay. So I think that following the code of conduct is the first place to start. And as a, a board member, ensuring that the code of conduct is followed by the athletes, but then contractually, there's, by coaches as well. And so I think to make a student feel comfortable enough to ensure that a coach is also following a code of conduct, I guess I'm not too sure how to really answer this question in, other than, you know, creating a safe environment for students, having like a mentor or within teams or captains that they could feel safe with or community members, parents going and having a safe conversation in that sense. But for a code of conduct for coaches, I'm not really too sure about that one. But I do think that creating a safe athletic environment is a priority and should be a priority in the district. I know that there is so many teams and so many athletes. So to keep that safe playing environment is important.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I think it's certainly an interesting question to try to give a solid answer on. But I think, I mean, there, there obviously have been issues in the past and it sounds like this person is probably referring to something that they, that they experienced. I think in the past, you know, the time that I've been on, you know, information has been shared with us as to what's happened, action, you know, corrective act, action, action plans. My understanding is that the A D meets with the coaches before every season and kind of lays out what, what, what's expected of them, what is their code of conduct, you know, the students sign a code of, of, of conduct. I know, you know, a few times we've had a third party get involved to do investigations and Bill Claremont was involved in kind of, you know, supervise one of, one of the teams. So I think, I mean, I guess in terms of, I, I feel like we have some policies and procedures in place. I think it's up to the A D to really stay on top of that and respond to parent concerns and take those concerns serious and really look into them all the way and investigate. I, my understanding is that a lot of times when something happens, they'll interview players individually, players as a team, try to get some information, some background to see what the clear picture is on the situation. So I think continue, continue to do that. I think it's also empowering our kids to be advocates for themselves, support their teammates. And I think keep those lines of communication open is really, really essential that they feel safe to express what's going on if there are, you know, legitimate concerns and legitimate issues. In terms of additional things implemented, I'm not sure anything additional has been implemented policy-wise. But again, I think, I think given that the, that the A D does meet with the, with the coaches at the beginning of every season and reviews what the expectations are in their code of conduct, that's really has to be our, our starting, our starting point for that.
Bob?
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure whether the, the term code of conduct here is a term of art, is something specific that whoever, that the questioner is, has in mind. But, you know, every employee of Bethlehem School District, including the coaches, is bound to a certain level of professionalism and, and conduct. I mean, that's just the way it is across the board. Obviously, the coach's conduct, you know, is a little, you know, it's not the same as the teacher's, but they are held to a standard about their conduct. To the extent that there are problems, I am a big sort of process person. I think that when you have, when you have an organization as big as Bethlehem, you have to have, you know, you, you can't deal with things on one-off situations. What you have to have is a robust process to addressing these situations. To the extent that you think the process is broken down, then that's where the board can become involved with, with the administration to try to improve that. I sit on the, the policy committee and so we review our policies all the time to make sure that they continue to be relevant, that they make sure they continue to address new things that are popping up. So to the extent that, you know, students want to report it, I mean, there are processes in place right now to the extent that there are improvements that can be made. Again, this goes back to sort of the collaboration between the board and the community. We get emails all the time, making suggestions, making complaints, which is fine, making, you know, comments about how things are running. And I can tell you that every one of those emails is read and considered by the board. So that, to the extent that there are, people have had negative experiences, I certainly would, would, would encourage them to reach out to the board, to reach out to Hollis specifically. And, and, you know, and I can tell you, I can guarantee you that it will be, it will be read and will be, you know, considered. So we're always looking to make improvements and we're happy to do that.
Okay, I'm combining two here. I think, I'm, I think I'm gonna have just the right number of questions to get us to the end of our time. So John, you go first on this one. And you were talking, you were, these last questions led to interaction with the superintendent. So there's two questions here that relate to that. How would you respond if you disagree with the decision, decision of the school administration? What kinds of data should the board rely on? And do you feel that the board has adequate input into district decisions? And overarching, maybe the same question, what do you believe is the role of the board as it relates to the supervision and oversight of the superintendent? So John, you get to go first on that. Okay, how, how would you respond if you disagree with the decision of the school administration? And then the rest of it kind of, how does that work? What kind of data would the board need to do that? And do you feel that you have adequate, adequate input into district decisions? And overall, what do you believe the role of the board is as it relates to the supervision and oversight of the superintendent?
We get two minutes for this? Well, I think if we, if we disagree with, with administration or superintendent, we are fortunate that we have, we have, we have, we have counsel who we can reach out to and get advice from them. That would typically happen, you know, during executive session or something like that. So I think that to the extent that, 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 that happens, I think we would bring that to the board and then discuss as a board and then discuss the action going, going forward from there. The board's, you know, one of the board's main jobs is to supervise the superintendent and worry about accountability. So I think the data, the data we, we would need, I think it would be kind of more specific to the, the situation that, that happened. I think, again, we're, we're certainly open and willing to ask questions and to request more information before making a decision or taking action or, you know, coming to some type of consensus as a board. So I think we're very fortunate to have that open line of communication with our, our council. In terms of the role of board and supervision, yeah, I mean, you know, as, as, as Bob said, you know, the people think that the board has this massive overreaching. I mean, the board is really meant to supervise and hold the superintendent accountable and, you know, really fiscal responsibility. So I think, and as those things relate, relate, relate to policy. So I think it's, as long as we stay in our lane and manage things within that lane, we're certainly doing our job. And I think, again, our biggest, our biggest job is to, to make sure that we're holding the superintendent and the admin accountable and managing, you know, discrepancies within there. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, oh, it'll have to be, right? Bob?
So in terms of, I sort of take it, I suppose, backwards. In terms of the role of the oversight superintendent, I mean, that is, that is our role. So that everybody in the district reports up to the superintendent and then the superintendent reports to the board. That's just how, that's, that's sort of the chain of command. So none of the teachers report to the board, you know, none of the other administration report to the board. Superintendent reports to the board. And so we have, you know, oversight responsibility. Now, in terms of the data that's used to assess that oversight, that's, that's a tricky question. So, so I think, I mean, this, this data can be, be two things here is, one is how do we, how to evaluate, okay? There's always going to be discussions and ongoing concerns about the types of metrics that one might use and the data used to support those metrics with regard to performance of a job like superintendent, okay? I could tell you that it's not an easy task. It's something that the board continues to discuss and to refine every single year I've been here is to what, you know, how to measure things, what kind of goals to set, and then how to assess whether those goals have been met. Of course, you know, because the goals are always amorphous. They're, they're always, you know, increase student participation, increase student scores. And so they're not always easy to measure. So that's, that's an ongoing thing. Obviously, we, we can, we take that very, very seriously and we continue to, you know, try to improve that process as we go. With regard to disagreement with, with the superintendent or the administration, if we disagree, we'll voice that opinion. And we, we meet regularly with members of the administration and, you know, I can tell you that we're not shy about sharing displeasure about different things. You know, obviously, again, the, the board has a very specific role and the administration is, administers to the, to the school and the board, you know, has, has, has power over the purse strings. And so, you know, obviously we can express our displeasure on a regular basis, sometimes much to, to Jody Chagrin, but that's the way it is. And that, that's, I guess that's my answer. Thank you.
All right, Susan?
All right, well, they had an advantage in that question, I feel like, being on the board. But I, I, you know, specifically, I think it would have to be a case by case answer, just me responding to this. Like, and I think disagreeing is not always a bad thing. It brings up important conversation that then maybe needs to be looked at a little bit more on both, by both parties. So by the administration and by the board. And like they said, seeking outside conversation with the council or looking at, but again, keeping the policies at the forefront of that conversation to guide where that disagreement comes from. So again, you guys had advantages. But I, I think just, I don't think disagreement is bad as long as you can disagree in a respectful way, but also having that evidence to kind of back up your, your thought process and then come to an agreement based on what's best case scenario.
Okay, so I have two more questions. This one, I think, is pretty straightforward and the second one is gonna be pretty open-handed and it'll take the next 20 minutes or so. But the first one, and let's see, Bob, you go first on this. Should the district prioritize literacy in the schools? And can you provide any specific goals in this effort?
So as a former English teacher, the answer is yes. The school district should prioritize literacy. Look, I, I think that literacy and, and the mastery of, of language is quite frankly, the cornerstone of all education now. We've got some crazy things coming down the pike with the A I kind of stuff and that's, that's, that's something we're gonna have to address. But I can't overemphasize my feeling about how much literacy is important. You know, the, that's something that we've been addressing quite, quite, quite earnestly. You know, there's the science of reading debate that's been going on for the last couple of years about, you know, the best way to teach literacy. And I know that Susie's gonna have an advantage here being a reading teacher. But that, that's something that the board has considered very, very, very closely. We've had several presentations by the reading department on this. We have gone to new systems, we, you know, that sort of shift back a little bit to, you know, what I consider to be what I, what the phonics. You know, and it's a science, just like any other science, there's data that you can assess. There are schools of thought that need to be considered and there are, you know, steps to be taken when you have decided as a, as an organization, as an institution, that, you know, there are better ways to do it. So in terms of the goals, you know, certainly, I mean, we track the literacy of, of our students very, very closely and those, those, those numbers have been increasing very, very nicely. I think we had a little hiccup during the COVID, unsurprisingly, but we, we track them very, very closely. Our literacy program is exceedingly effective. We have continued to stay on top of the latest developments in the thought process with regard to teaching, reading and literacy. And, you know, I, I expect that that will continue in the future and I certainly would support all of those efforts.
Okay, Susan?
Yes, prioritize literacy. I, I think, just to begin with, like, literacy is the backbone in so much of learning. I mean, you have literacy in, across all subjects. So to start at such a young age and really prioritize literacy in, in the primary grades is going to be one of the best things that we can do as a district. And to go back to that science of reading debate and the data is there with all of that research. But regardless of that, whatever program is chosen based on how the district has gone about choosing a program, the evidence through the iReady, I think is what we use, is gonna be there on whether those programs are working or not. And I do think that change is good. So although, you know, reading might have been taught one way five years ago, it's okay to embrace the change and move forward as long as the data and the research and the research is there to provide that learning and that programming for the students. But I think that we as a district do a nice job with the literacy piece, at least what I'm seeing in the early grades. And I think that we have the programs and the supports in place for that early intervention so that we are kind of catching it before it's gotten too far and snowballed. But yes, prioritizing literacy, funding where it needs to be, adding programs or staffing where we need to is definitely a priority.
John?
I agree wholeheartedly with Susie. And I think, yeah, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, literacy and reading is a lifelong skill, whether you're reading directions or, you know, some, whatever, reading comprehension is always, is always necessary. So I think it has to be a priority. I think, again, we, you know, things go back and forth, the science, science of reading, now we're using foundations. I mean, you know, I think we're, we're, we're fortunate that our district is very, is very proactive. I think, you know, the constant iReady testing, I mean, I know my kids thought it was a little excessive, but I think, I think it is good that we are tracking it. I mean, I think we were fortunate, a lot of schools during COVID kind of fell off a cliff and I think we, we had a little bump in the road, but, you know, the, the, the recovery has been pretty exceptional. So I think we're, we're certainly fortunate that, that we have that here. And I think, you know, our, once the kids hit middle school, they get the, the summer, summer reading list. So I think that there's, there's a lot of, a lot of priority there. And I think, again, the, the constant testing shows that our kids are, are performing. We do have wonderful reading teachers where kids who do struggle can get the, the additional assistance. So I think, I think it should, it should always, it should always be a goal. I think we're certainly tracking it and I think any ways that, that, that we can improve that, the board would definitely want to, want to support that in, in any way they could.
I think it's interesting, the question that came up was literacy. Nobody asked about, now I can't remember what the terms, the tech stuff, that nobody asked about that. No, no, none of the questions were in, which I thought that was all of the thing these days, but I've been around too long. All right, so I have, I'm gonna try to do two questions and then the final so that you all get to go first again. Susan, it's your turn. Because I noticed this last question is really two questions. This is maybe quick and easy. How do you feel about the restructuring of the elementary school boundaries in 2026 and '27? This, as a members of the board, you'll be facing this.
I watched this presentation, though, so. I said, I just watched this presentation.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. I feel it has to be a bigger conversation, but I also know that within the meeting that I watched last week, you guys had spoke about hiring a consulting firm, if I have that wording correctly. And I feel like those are the professionals. So to be honest, I mean, we live in a great district, all the schools are amazing. It really impacts the elementary schools because that, you know, then everybody goes to the middle school and then the high school. But, you know, I know that people move to where they feel is going to be best for their family or school. But in my opinion, all of the schools are great. They all have great teachers, they all have great support. So I do know that that is a, even just talking to people in the community this past week, something that people feel very strongly on. But I also know that I was just at our PTO meeting last night and there are some buildings that are busting out the seams and then the building that we're at is, used to be one of the biggest ones and now it's shrinking in size a little bit. So I don't necessarily see it as a bad thing because the end goal, especially as a teacher, smaller class sizes and as mom, like a smaller class size is the most important part. So I don't necessarily have negative feelings about it, but I do know folks feel that way. But again, I think that working with the professionals on this is going to be the best thing possible. But in the end, it's a great district and no matter where you go, your kids are gonna have great friends and a great education.
All right, John?
I think it's, it's a super difficult topic for people. I mean, you know, you look at what happened during Clarksville's closing. I mean, there was a ton of emotion and a lot of anger and people really, really, really struggled. I think it is, the situation we're in right now with the way that the, the population changes are and where people are more concentrated and not and, you know, the numbers, numbers at schools. I mean, it's, it, it just becomes very difficult, which then also translates the ripple effect of the busing and the staffing. the busing and the staffing and, you know, keeping things equitable, that, you know, this principal has 12 teachers to supervise, but this principal has 20 teachers. So there's a lot, there's a lot of factors that have to kind of go into there, if we don't pay attention to that and don't try to, try to, you know, mitigate it before it becomes a massive Clarksville situation. You know, it sounds like the goal is to not redistrict, more look at flex zones. I think having the, the consultant come in is going to be a huge, huge benefit, just to get some input from someone who has dealt with these issues, because hopefully they'll be mindful of, again, the emotional pieces that are out there, the physical pieces that are out there, and a lot of the, you know, kind of structural, you know, pieces that need, need to be considered within the national school district, and the staffing, and the union. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to, to, to consider there. And again, I, I think the benefit right now is that the district that went through a redistricting and went through all those, those difficult times is very considerate and sensitive to that issue, and I think much less likely to just go into, we're redistricting, this is it. We're trying to find the best, the best, the best solution possible to, to keep things copacetic.
And Bob, your, your thoughts on it?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is going to be reiteration. You know, talk about the third rail of local politics here, you know, redistricting your elementary schools is, is sort of, you know, how to touch a nerve, because people come attached to them. And that's a good thing. It's a good thing that our communities are attached to their local, their local schools. It shows the commitment they have to those schools, and it shows the commitment that the schools have to the students. But the reality is, people are moving to different places. I mean, if you look at the map, we just had the presentation, you can look right at it, you see where the growth areas are, and they're not in Hammergrill. You know, they're just, they're, they're Glenmont, they're, they're, you know, the Eagle District, because that's where the houses are being built. And that's just a reality of, that, that we're going to have to deal with. I think that the, the best that we can do as a school district and as a board is to take as much time and consideration and care in any decisions that are made with regard to changing any kind of boundaries. We are considering something, we, the presentation, I think, last week, last time, maybe the time before, about it. We're, you know, I can tell you, as a board, we, we're taking it very seriously. We are, you know, to talk about hiring consultants to do it. It's a reality, folks. It's just, it's happening. You can't have, you know, 30 kids in a classroom over here and 10 students in a classroom over here. That's inequitable for the students and for the, the teachers as well. So the best we can do as a board and as a district is to make sure that we are making the best and most considered decisions possible to, to, to serve the community in the best way that we can.
Okay, this is the penultimate question, and then you all get to do your final statements. So, let's see, John, you go first. Good thing I don't have to talk anymore. I'm losing it. Sorry. What do you see as the top two issues in need of change or growth for the district? And how would you address these as a school board member? Well, I just made it.
Do you have a question?
Did you say, you said change and then something else?
Yeah.
Was there?
The top two issues in need of change or growth for the district. And then how would you address these as a board member?
It's a zinger for the last question. I think that the, I think top two, and maybe just because it's been a lot more of a topic, maybe because it's like, I'm seeing more people, it's, it's, it's end of the year, and there's, there's IEP meetings and stuff like that. I, I think, I think, you know, I think, I think special ed definitely needs attention. Again, I think, I think with the leadership change, with Doug coming in, I think it's definitely moving in a better direction. I think change doesn't happen quickly, so I think that's, that's something that, that will, that, that won't take time. But I think it's, to me, it seems positive that there seems to be more dialogue. There seems to be, again, an organizing of better lines of communication between some of those. So I, and again, I, I think, I think receiving feedback is really, is really, is really critical. I think that that's an area where we can get really wonderful feedback that can, that can help to move things in a, in a direction. The second area that I'd like to see change in, I think the only thing, and again, I didn't, this is just my, I wouldn't say change or caution, but we've discussed this several times with some of these curriculum programs that they, that they brought into some of the schools, just that we're, we're giving these, these different curriculum changes a chance to see if they're going to work or not before we change to something else. And I think seeing them through is, so it may not necessarily be an issue, but I, I feel like as a, as a policy, or, you know, something to consider that whatever, whatever kind of curriculum changes we're looking at, that we're really vetting them and giving them the time to see if they're really effective and beneficial before shifting to something or before just locking into it and trying to ride it out and having it not be, not be beneficial. How would, how would I address these? Again, I think as a board, it's really about us getting information, us knowing what's going on, and...
We'll have to wait and find out more.
But I think, I think, I think just for two seconds, I think it's really just, just trying to, to do our best to see how we can manage things from a policy standpoint, from a budget standpoint, and as, you know, advocates to make sure that the school is, is really doing its best to move, move things forward.
Okay, Bob?
Okay. So growth is change. So it is, to a certain extent, there's two things redundant. I guess the two, two areas where I would want to see growth, and, and obviously, I, I, what I want to make sure I express is that I don't think that these are, are failing as it is now. But these are two areas where I think that we're going to have to sort of grow, you know, as a community. The first is something I think that was alluded to earlier that didn't get really touched on, is our, our use and adaptation of technology. I just think that this is a, an enormous sea change to education that, it's not been ignored, it's been a lot of ink spilled on it, that we really are going to have to come to terms with. What is AI? How is it being used? How is it going to be utilized in the classroom? I just think it's, you know, as, as an older person, I, you know, I can get a, can look back at the good old days, but unfortunately, this change is coming. And it's one thing I've talked with the board about, we're going to have to get our arms around it. We're going to have to come up with some policies about how it's utilized, and how to, how to embrace it, because it's coming. And I guess the second sort of area of growth that I'd like to see is an increased, I guess, attention and interest. And I, and they do that now, so I don't want to, I want to make sure, I'm, I'm not suggesting that this doesn't happen, but to the, to counseling for our students with regard to career opportunities and their next steps. Obviously, Bethlehem, there's a lot of kids who go on to four-year colleges, but that's not, you know, that's not necessarily the best, you know, option for everybody. I just think that we have to make sure that we are continuing to address and to present to the students, you know, the smorgasbord, the buffet of options that they have, because the two-year options and the career, you know, the BOSsies, you know, kind of options are fantastic options for some of these kids. You know, not every kid's the same, different strokes for different folks. However we want to put it, we have to make sure as a school that we are providing our students with as many different options, as many different choices as possible. And that's an area of growth that I'd like to see continue.
Okay, and Susan?
Okay, so one of the pieces, I guess I'm going to go with the word growth, not change. But the social, emotional piece, I would love to see more, or just growth in across the board, because it's not just a Bethlehem thing. I think it's across New York State, it's across the country, the world, especially of kids. And so I think that growing that as even the programs within the district, the, the resources within the district, curriculums used, I think that is an important piece to ensure that our kids really are able to, you know, function at their best when learning. I saw something in the fall, I think at the high school community day, or I might be mixing up the name, but they had like lots of different things they could do. They had like dogs come in, they had speakers, and I just thought that is such an amazing event that they had, a whole day of it. And to bring that to all the levels would be really great. And also to continue to share the appropriate use of technology outside of school and during school, starting at a young age, I think, would really help that social, emotional piece. And then, again, I feel like looking at the special ed and the growth in that programming, ensuring the programming is available for all students and their learning needs, and that all programs are staying within compliance of the state regulations for those kids, so that they are able to achieve their, their best outcome as, in education.
Well, I think we are so perfect. It's 10 of, and at 10 of, you're supposed to do closing remarks. So you guys are great with your timing on things and the right number of questions. Those of you who submitted questions and we didn't get to them, sorry, but I think I tried to cover a pretty broad spectrum of things that are relevant to Bethlehem, and I hope you got some good answers. So now, Bob, you went last when we started, so you get to go first when we close, okay?
Great, thanks. I appreciate the, the efforts that you've had to make sure that everybody gets out and gets an opportunity to hear. I agree with your, your mission about making sure that the voters are informed, so I appreciate your efforts and the efforts of, of your organization. You know, I think that this experience for me for the last three, three years, that my, my experience on the board has been, you know, has been interesting. It's been frustrating. It's been infuriating, and it's been wonderful. And so I, I, I think that one of the things that has, has really occurred to me, and I've learned, is just how well-run this district is from the internal. It's, it's amazing to see how the sausage is made, and, and the amount of work that goes into making sure that a ship of the sites continues on, you know, in the right direction, and the amazing amount of work by, you know, all the professionals and all the people who have done it. That being said, of course, I do think there's, you know, as always, there's room for improvement. We always want to keep pushing forward. I've said a few times that I feel that I am in a better position now than I was three years ago to serve the district, to serve the board. I think I am more value-added. I'm more effective. I have more knowledge now, which is one of the big reasons that I, that I decided to run again. You know, if, if given the chance, I think I can serve the district well, and I hope you give me that opportunity. And again, I thank you for your time and for the efforts of, of the organization. Thank you.
Okay, and Susan?
Oh, so, yeah, thank you for putting this night on. I enjoyed it much more than I thought I would, to begin with, to be honest. But, yeah, so I, I agree. I just definitely, again, put my name out there because I wanted to become a part of the conversation in better understanding the ins and outs of the district. And, again, being, living here 39 years, graduating from here, I've just always had pride in the community. And so just kind of, again, keeping up with that conversation to ensure that that education and those experiences are still there, moving forward for all of our students going through now. That was just, you know, something I do have passion for and what brought me to this seat. So thank you again. Thank you to Bob and John. Again, I really did enjoy it, so, yeah.
All right, and John, you got the last word.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, and thank you for all you who came to enjoy this experience. Yeah, I mean, I, I think I want to start with saying that we are blessed to be in a really tremendous district. I think it's a, it's a lot to juggle for our staff, administration, everyone, to really try to meet the expectations that are there by the community and taxpayers. I think that there's a, there are, there's a lot of pressures from so many different, different, different areas, and it's really hard to prioritize things. So being on the board has given me a much, much greater appreciation, because everyone has their kind of driving force. When we get people reaching out, but there are, there's so many driving forces, and it's really difficult to do that. So I definitely acknowledge that. And I think, again, I think still, our school does a really amazing job at, at trying to, to please as many as possible and do a really great job at the same time. I feel that myself, I, I feel like I've proven myself to be beneficial and a contributing member to the board. I feel like I understand the importance of making decisions and considering different perspectives, and being mindful to outside, outside influences and, and what we have going on. I do believe that, you know, emotion-based decision-making doesn't really benefit us much. And I think at the end of the day, we have to be a board that is respectful and can kind of move forward on a, on a path together regardless of whatever decisions are made. And I feel like I've, I've been there. And I do, very, very much like Susie, I believe that the social, emotional development of our kids is just as important as their academic success and achievements, and we should celebrate all of that together. So, again, I, I, I think we're blessed, we're blessed to be here. And I think, like I said earlier, that the goal of our school is to create functionally productive young people, so they can become functionally productive adults. And if I have the opportunity to continue, I'd certainly love to, to help to do that for the next three years, for what I can do to help to foster that in our school.
Well, I just want to thank you all three for sticking your necks out for this. And I think it's always sad that not all three of you are going to be on the board, because I think you all sound terrific. You people in Bethlehem, thank you. The people that submitted the questions, I think you did a great job, and I tried to, again, do the best job of spreading around. Thank you to the, the school district who set this up, really. It's, it's always, as the league person, I've done this three or four times now, and working with the Bethlehem School District on this is terrific, because they do all the work and we just show up. And it's wonderful. And those of you out there who are watching this, watch it, and make sure next Tuesday, week from, less than a week, you show up sometime between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Is that what it is? 6:00 PM? 7:00 and 9:00? No, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And, you know, bring your National Grid bill or whatever it is, and make the tough decision to pick two of these three people, vote on the budget. I guess you have a tricky library board thing to vote on, too, and I'm glad I'm not doing that candidates for them. And vote on the library budget. But this is wonderful. Thank you for letting us work with you on this. I think it's great. And good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
[applause]